Undermarket set, go. You guys ready? Okay, we will convene the meeting at 7:05 PM. And we have a member of the public. If you would like to introduce us and tell us why you're here.
Sure. My name is George Tavoris. I'm actually here because I know Jack Hannah. I was offering my services to fix your problem with the handicap button on the outside of the door of the building. On a couple of occasions, a few people, friends of mine who tried to get in, they couldn't get in for one reason or another. And that kind of hurts a little. So I'd like to, as well as there are some violations that you're in right now, which, you know, you really shouldn't be there because someone could bring a suit against the town. And so I'd like to get that fixed for you as soon as possible.
Can we segue into a premature view of the director's report? Do you want to talk about what's happened in the last couple of weeks?
Yes, so I can speak directly to that. So just to provide a little bit of background about why the situation has been and hasn't been. The door is part of a town-wide access system. There will be the ability to swipe yourself into... I don't know if it's going to be all the town buildings or most of the town buildings, but there's been a network that's been being built around town to link all the buildings together. And it's taken roughly about four years to get this done. And that has finally been completed. That was something that we really didn't have anything to do with or any direct control over.
Sure.
But it put us in a position where the door was not functional. In the meantime, the mechanical elements of the door have been completed as of this week. The door is now powered. It can now be opened using the buttons at the inside and outside of the entrance. And we should be good to go. But that, it should be said that that is the only door that has a mechanical operator. The other doors in the building do not have them. They were never designed to have them. So if that was something that we were to add down the road, we'd have to discuss, you know, what that means, which doors would be affected, and give quotes for that work. But that was, as we understand it, we are within compliance of ADA with all the doors that are in the building in terms of the passages, the width, you know, the width to get through in a wheelchair, the weight of the doors, et cetera.
Excellent. The only thing I'll say, not to be nasty or anything, but that connection was irrelevant of the network connection. That could have been done at any time.
That's fine, and I'm not an electrician.
No, no.
We struggled with the project manager and the general contractor to get a functioning door.
Just FYI.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand. But we were not able to get it done, and it is now, hopefully, a good point. So, and we are, you know, we're very set along with everyone else that we didn't have that functionality sooner than we did.
And then the only other thing is they keep pinning one of the doors. Because I know my wife was in here last week, and she had a whole armful of doors. She was in a hurry, and she went to get out the door. She hit the door that was pinned and almost broke her wrist. And the explanation of the person that was here said, "Oh, the fire department says that we can do that, and the building inspector says we can do that." No, you cannot. That's a double door. The reason it is a double door is because of your occupancy permit, and as well as the reason there are crash bars on that door, is that means free ingress. When you say free ingress, I don't have to have any prior knowledge that anything, I can get out either one of those doors. So that's the other thing that you really should take care of. Someone's pinning one of those doors during that.
That was the solution before the full functionality was, you know, that the doors were fully operating. Now, when you turn the key out in the hallway, the bars are sucked in, the doors are completely unlocked, there is no mechanism holding them shut. So this, I'm just saying, this is like literally this week, I can show it to you right now. I have the key right here. So we can do that. But I mean, that's how the doors are operating. So once the power's turned on, the door's unlocked, the bars come in, and you're able to push them freely. There's not, you don't have to push the crash bar in to release the lock. It just opens.
So when you exit, if those crash bars are pushed in, how do you open the door?
Well, they're pushed in, meaning they're unlocked. So when we were pinning the door, you would push the crash bar in and pin the door, and then it would open freely.
So you're no longer having to pin the doors?
No. It's now operating as it is supposed to operate.
And if the power goes out, those doors release? So I can guess?
That is, this is such a new development that I don't have any of all the answers for that.
But you should check it early to be sure.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, so we're dependent on the, you know, the town maintenance folks that are sort of overseeing this project. And it's, you know, it is in progress. There is more functionality that will be coming. It's not a complete dumb deal because we don't have, at this point, we don't have the ability to have people swipe themselves in. We can't do that yet.
Right.
So the door is basically just electrified, but that's it.
Don't you have other card readers on this building though?
No.
Oh, okay, that was mine.
There's a card reader, there's a card reader on the exterior door, there's a card reader for this room, and there's a card reader for the smaller conference room.
Oh, okay, they just never put one on that door?
On which door?
On the main entrance where the double doors are.
There is, there is one out there.
And it's not functioning?
No, that's what I'm saying, because the door was only, that functionality is not here yet. We're still working on that because that's part and parcel of the network that's being built, that's being implemented.
Okay, if they say so.
I mean, it's not my, it's not a system, it's a town.
No, I know. But you have doors here now that are on card readers. That means there's a panel in this building?
Yeah.
And in order for that card reader to function, all it needs is a panel that's in the building. It has nothing to do with your network.
Okay, that's fine. And I understand that. We would need, we would need an apparatus to create cards to swipe in, and that's not, we're not the entity that's creating those cards.
I just was trying to give you some FYI, that's all. Because some of the explanations that were given to me and the friends of mine that couldn't get in that finally got in was just incorrect information. So whoever was giving out that information was given the wrong information.
Yeah, I mean, at a certain point, we just started directing people to the town hall because it wasn't, you know, it's not our, it's not our project, unfortunately. And Charles, we might, we were not able to get anything done completely by this.
I'm just glad that the two folks that kept bugging me that were going to go to the ADA, I told them, "Hold up, let them, because it is a hefty fine." And you guys were way over. The building's been up for, what, five years, seven years?
So we know that we have kind of brought, that has been brought to the attention of town hall, and they have looked into it, and they have told us, because we, like you, have felt the same way.
Yeah.
And people have gone there, and we've been assured by town hall that we're...
They were totally incorrect. Especially when they covered it up with a piece of paper bag. That's even worse. That's a solosuit. So a lot of things were done that you really could have gotten deep doo-doo fall.
Well, it sounds like progress has been made.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, as long as they're working, it's great. It's fantastic. I'm glad to hear.
Good. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay.
I just wanted to see if I could help if it wasn't working, that's all. And it seems like they finally got it done, so that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great rest of your week.
You want to stay?
I haven't been home yet.
Oh, we're going to do the minutes. You're welcome.
I haven't been home yet, so I want to go eat and get ready for the...
The circus?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Minutes. Can we have a motion and a second?
I vote we accept.
All right, second. Any comments or corrections or changes needed?
Thank you for the tip about putting in the link to the YouTube video. Right in. That was a good, good suggestion.
All in favor? Thank you. Oh, I made this for you because we used to have, before, and I'll be happy to send it electronically, but I only...
I got lost. I can't get there. Great.
It's just if you want to...
Can we give you corrections?
I suppose.
Well, just don't call my house because...
Wait, what?
We don't even know if that works anymore. Don't try that.
So the cell phone is valid?
Yeah, yeah.
The house phone, not so much?
Correct. We've got an extra space in there, but anyway.
Do you have an extra copy left that I can take, or no? Are you out?
You can find it because I'll probably want the electronic one.
Oh, okay.
If anyone else finds any other questions, changes, or corrections, please let me know.
Does anybody have another pen? Thank you. I'll bring that around just to get it back. Thank, oh, it's nice. Okay, I'm just kidding.
Director's report.
Okay, so as you are aware, Joanne and I worked either month of August on the surveys for the long-range plan. We met our self-critical of getting 200 responses for each survey. We got 217 for the first one, 255 for the second, and as of tonight, we had 204 for the third. So I was happy that we, you know, that we got what is hopefully a representative sampling for us to draw some conclusions. I do have the results here. I don't think we should spend a lot of time looking at this, but we will, I think, when we have a little more time to work with this, we'll be able to put together a better presentation. But I think, you know, you can see, you know, just at a glance that there is, you know, a nice distribution of age groups for folks that have, you know, children in, or school age, children in the home, primarily these who have the residence. So we have, at the beginning of each survey, we kind of tacked on, I don't know if everyone took it, but the first section of each survey is basically the same question, so that each time we had a survey on a different subject, you'd be able to then look at that and see, you know, how that, you know, what kind of demographics we were looking at in the response. And so hopefully, they're going to be relatively similar from survey to survey. But we had, there's a lot of information. There's a very long tail here from, I think, people entering their own information for other. So we'll have to kind of go through and pick a category that most fits, and then retaliate those numbers, and then...
There were some, do you remember?
Yeah, jump ahead a few.
There were some responses, I think not in the first one, but in the second and third, that we think were bots. So we may, I can look at it as a spreadsheet. Do you know how to toggle back to the spreadsheet? So we may pull out the bot. So if I look at a spreadsheet, I can see which line was the bot, and I can pull out all their responses.
So what makes you say that?
Do you want to...
Yeah, let me see if I can find it.
So there's like random words in the, about, like, where it says additional information, there's like weird random words. So we can see the data as a spreadsheet like this, or we can see it the other way, and yeah, right, you're right. You do these all the time, don't you?
I'm sort of looking for the evidence.
Teachers live by these. The bot evidence is, it's probably a little easier to see in the other form, like, because then you can just go to the ones that have the...
Which questions were...
And it wasn't the first one, it was more in the two and three, where we have like...
Oh, that's a great...
Okay.
It was kind of clear. Yeah. Yeah, so we'll kind of look at those and see, like, you know, where we had those.
So there's a number of people mentioning the Khalid Library? The Khalid Library? I have not heard of that.
I have heard of it. But I can't speak to, I really can't speak to it. I don't know much about it, but I have heard of it.
Yeah, so we wouldn't take out necessarily answers we don't like, we would just take out the answers that were absolute, like, you know, when you see a character like that, that's a... And then we'll just go across the line, that line in the spreadsheet, and pull those out. So it needs a little cleanup, but...
Yeah, but I think we got, I think we got some good information here to look at, and as we have the chance to sit there and think about it, we'll work on next steps as far as, do we want to have people come back for another, you know, conversation, another, you know, discussion about certain aspects that jump out at us that seem to be in need of clarification? But I think we'll probably, hopefully, have time to maybe talk about that next week.
Absolutely.
So yeah, so I'm just happy with that. Oh, and do we still need to, do we still need to do a drawing? I think we still have...
I need to draw the third.
Okay.
The second never responded, so I'm going to go back and pick another second.
And Claire says thank you.
We felt like we were a little worried about that. It was, you know, I used a random, so the audience knows, I used a random number generator. So the spreadsheet lists 1 to 204, and then I went online and did a random number generator, and then as long as the person supplied their information at that number, that was the winner of the...
It's also possible that the second person whose identity we're not clear on, we had contact information, but I don't know if we had any...
We had an email address, but not an email. So I had to send like this random, like, hi.
But no one responded, so it's possible that that was maybe one of the, that couldn't have been one of the weird, you know, one of the weird responders, it's possible. But anyway.
So we'll redraw the last two.
Yeah, so we will finish, we'll finish that, and we'll get those gifts out to the winners.
So can you just summarize what your next steps will be?
Besides drawing the random winner?
Yes.
Patrick and I will be meeting and kind of pulling together a better report for all of you, and then from there, I think we're hoping as a board, we'll make a decision about next steps, when you see the information in a clearer way.
Yeah.
We might have a suggestion. Yeah, we might have a suggestion for you.
That's a good place to start.
But we're not going to just, we're not going to leave you with an open-ended...
Right.
Joanne, how did you come up with the questions that went into these surveys?
So we use a lot, so in the past, the survey we did the last time had a lot of really good information, and it was done really well. So a lot of the things we pulled out were from that original time we did this survey. And then Patrick really had some things he wanted to add to it, and...
So I think when the survey was done the first time, it was a one, it was a single survey, and the scope of the survey was a little bit more limited because I think in the time that that survey was being done for the long-range plan, it was very clearly in the mind of the trustees that building a new library was the goal. So a lot of the, a lot of the questions there were sort of, seemed to be, you know, kind of built around that, about, you know, the assumption that there will be dissatisfaction with the current building, or, you know, not necessarily an assumption, but like questioning, like, how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with like the level of service you're getting now? And so in this case, we used that as a starting point. We used like a lot of the questions about demographics that had been in that, in that survey. I'm pretty sure that was done, I think, a little before my time, and I think that was probably Allison that put that together at that time. So we kind of like started with her, you know, with her survey from whenever that was, eight, nine years ago or more, and then built, decided to do, take this approach of having the shorter surveys, because we didn't want people to have survey fatigue with like a super long survey with many, many questions. And it didn't necessarily matter that the same 200 people answered the survey, if we could get 200 people, you know, in a town of 5,500 to answer a subset, you know, of the questions. So we did, went with a shorter survey based on these themes of like, you know, the first one was staffing and services, libraries, community commons, and then building for the future.
Can I jump in and say that the themes came from, a lot of the first information came from that first meeting we all had, where we saw what people were thinking about? So that's how we picked the themes also, like, looking at that when we had that time here together.
Well, and impressive responses. More than 200 for all three surveys?
Yeah, I think it, I think it goes to show that we have a better, maybe a better reach than we expected when we kind of use all the resources at our disposal. We have, you know, we have some email lists, we have, you know, the Friends of the Library email blast, we use the Town's email blast to send us out, social media, regular paper signage. So we kind of pulled out all the stops, and thankfully it worked.
I think one of the things I was happy about, and so it's weird, but I think Patrick and I really thought it was important that we hear from people who choose other libraries and why they choose not to be here, and some of that information is in here, which is really nice to see, like, some people said, "Well, the hours don't work for me," or, you know, "Or I work closer to another library." But we do have some nice information about that, which I think can inform what we do also.
I think actually one of the things that was interesting regarding...
Oh, there is that question right there.
Oh, yeah. So let me see if I can find anything about hours. So these are, this is the, this is the response on the hours that people would like to use the library. Let's see, we got a strong response for, you know, there's a, there's a strong response for some Sunday hours.
Also weekend afternoons.
Yeah, well, Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, that's easy because we're already open, we're already open, so, but it seems like a lot of people want those hours. Friday was surprising because Friday is not as busy a day as Sundays, but...
And Patrick and I did have this talk when we were built, thinking about times, like when we were kind of hashing it out, one of the things we said was that Friday nights were originally put in the schedule, so it's a benefit to have been here for like 12 years. We originally opened on Friday nights because DVDs. So folks would want to come in Friday night and get their DVDs. That's why we had originally added Friday night to the library schedule, because people would come in Friday nights and get their DVDs for the weekend. It was like, right, it was like Blockbuster, and it was very busy on Friday nights. So like, there's a place we may want to look because people watch Netflix. They don't necessarily come in for DVDs on Friday nights. So, you know, it will be interesting, like, we'll look at the attendance numbers and we'll get through.
Right. There may be some, there may be some things that we can do to tweak the hours in a way that's budget neutral. I think it's also clear that there is demand, there is a demand for evening hours, but there was, I think there's consistently been a strain of feedback. I can't really say that it's in the surveys yet, but we've often gotten that comment from people across the desk of why we can't be open every day at the same time in the morning. I think people would really like us to just be open at, you know, just like a regular retail store, like you open at 9:00 or, you know, 10:00 or whatever, every day. I don't know that we can get there right away, but that might be something to improve as well.
Does anyone at the table know, are the Jones and the Forbes libraries open on Sundays?
I thought not.
Jones is during the school year, but not in the summer.
I thought they ended Sunday.
I don't, they didn't used to. I can't speak for...
I'm going to look it up right now.
I don't think Forbes is open, but I think Lilly is open on Sunday. I looked once, not too long ago. But unless you're going down to Springfield, those are the nearest ones. No one else has Sunday hours, is my recollection.
You're right, they had it Sunday 1:00 to 5:15.
Which one is that?
The Jones.
So that's during the school year or all year round?
They did it starting September 2nd, it's up to May 31st, so yeah, so yeah.
So summer, they changed the hours.
And I will say, as a teacher in Amherst, they have a similar situation where students go to the library after school, although it's a, you know, it's a smaller time window because school ends at 3:45 in our high school. But also, we may think about this, I don't know, we, the Jones does a lot of work with our Life Skills students in getting them library cards, they come regularly, they learn about checking out books. I don't know if Hadley has a Life Skills program or not, but they do a lot of that during the school day.
So any other questions about this stuff?
And there'll be a lot coming.
What's that?
I said there'll be a lot of information coming.
Yeah, yeah. And hopefully it gives a clear direction and isn't just contradictory. But yeah, really happy with how it turned out so far.
Forbes library's closed on Sundays.
Right, but does it say that Lilly is open?
I didn't see Lilly, but I'll look here.
So if it's okay, I'll move on to, so we, I've got a little sneak preview of the work in progress on the new library website, which, so this is the front page, the homepage of the library website, and you have a very simplified layout compared to the existing website, which is fairly cluttered, in my opinion, with a bunch of stuff on there that are, yeah.
It's all the Friends one we set up, yeah, which is very nice.
Yeah, so a lot of, a lot of the information here is in pull-down menus, and, you know, these are live links. This is not published, but this is all, you know, this is all functional at the draft level. And you've actually got the, that's the archives for the meeting minutes. The archive of meeting minutes will continue to reside on the town website, because I think by law they need to. Got the official town calendar link here.
Who's building this?
I, this is a Squarespace website, it's all modular, and you just kind of, you know, kind of mess with it until you get what you like. So everything here, everything obviously is customizable. If there's anything here in terms of, you know, that you don't like, or you would like to see it in a different way, it can continue to evolve. But the important thing is that we get something that's functional and easy to maintain.
Patrick, do you think it's worth putting Hadley MA Public Library?
So this comes up. I do, because I Google Amherst all the time and wind up in Amherst, New York.
Oh, I end up in New York.
And the DPW fields phone calls from Amherst residents about streets that don't exist in Amherst MA, because they've Googled it and then just blind dialed a number, not even thinking that that area code is wrong.
Well, okay, I'll have to think that, think that one through. The, to get to the phone number, though, you would have to scroll down to the address, which clearly shows... which clearly shows Hadley MA, but perhaps there's a way that we could work that in at the top with a, you know, maybe a, or maybe a, maybe a town of, oh, is that what you meant, the town of Hadley, Mass, like on this right here?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yes.
Okay, that, that will be something that needs to do without totally disrupting the flow.
Design the headline.
Yeah.
I think if you go on Google and you put in Hadley, though, sometimes you end up in Hadley in England someplace. You never know.
They used to spell that differently.
Yeah, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, someone L E I changed.
I went through this with Amherst with the 9/11 remembrance ceremony just yesterday. I'm like looking for the street that the, like, I've never heard of that street before. And I work, I've worked here for a while, you know. Oh, that's Amherst, New York.
That's a very good point. This happens a lot on websites.
There's really not much to say beyond that at this point, other than that this is the, this is the basic template, the, the, this is the, this is actually just a screenshot, it's not functional right now, but the, we will bring the, the Wowberry widget that we use now on the current website that will be embedded here. We will have, again, using a widget to display events from the, from library calendar, which is the product that we're, that we're working to set up. So there will be some sort of a scroll feed to show you like things that are coming up. It won't be the whole calendar at a glance, it will, because unfortunately that calendar cannot be embedded, the whole thing, but that might be too much anyway. So we're going to probably just do, you know, another, similar to the Wowberry thing, like a scroll of like upcoming events for whatever time period, you know, parameter that we set for it. And then we'll just have, over here, we'll have a column of, of news items, so more text based things that we want to post. Library closed tomorrow due to snowstorm or whatever, so you can see things at a glance.
Do you know if this platform is scalable to looking at it on a device?
Yes, it's supposed to, yes, you're supposed to be able to look at it.
Do they have that little button where you can see when you're setting it up? I know that other, you know, when you set it up.
Yeah, I haven't done that much. I'm not quite sure that that is.
Yeah, most of the platforms I work with do that.
Yeah. So, and that's it. And so we will also be able to collect email, email addresses for people that want to sign up, document, just for email lists.
And you're expecting this in November, was it, what is it?
That's the whole.
Okay, great. Looks good.
Looks really nice.
Looks really nice.
Desperately needed.
I like that photo a lot.
Great.
It had gotten a lot of early praise in today's meeting, yes. Seemingly as far as, yes.
Whoever is responsible for choosing the picture of Asparagus is brilliant.
That is my kitchen, that is my kitchen, the hall is my kitchen. So, I mean, the thought behind that being that, you know, I really wanted the, the thought of the library and, and, you know, for people to, visiting the website, thinking about the library, to be thinking about the library as something that they take into their homes rather than just a brick and mortar thing, but really the spirit of the library is something that you come here, you take something with you back home and it's a domestic feeling as opposed to just a, you know, a town building or what have you. So, so that's that. And then, let's see. So we just, we went over the stuff with the access hardware that just really happened quickly. I mean, I can't, I don't really want to get into it, but, but it is functioning. Hopefully we will have a better sense of like the full functionality very soon, very eager to get that working so that we can begin to offer people after hours access to these rooms because I think that that is also going to potentially change the dynamic. It's hard to tell from the, from the surveys how much of the demand for evening hours is just because people want a place to come and study, because I think that's largely it. I think, I think people are, you know, hungry to have space to, to hold their events, to hold a meeting, to, to study, what have you. I don't necessarily think that it's just because everyone wants to come here and browse for a book at nine at night on a Tuesday. You know, I think there's probably a little bit about that, but it's primarily driven by, I think, other desires. So hopefully we can begin to meet those by providing that access, even if it's not staff access. And the, I don't have any information on the children's wall repair. And tomorrow, we're actually having the folks coming in, if you recall, you authorized the repair or the modification of ductwork that was not, that was installed properly to allow access to the, to the cassette that needs to be opened to change filters and things like that, things they haven't been able to get them. So that's, that's happening tomorrow.
And just a side note, I heard an interesting thing on the radio today that was talking about a library of things, but it was the city of Chicago has a library of tools run and maintained by the city of Chicago. They have over 3,000 tools in it. And for a small fee, depending on the tool, you can check out a tool and use it and then bring it back.
There's a private one in Philadelphia.
Is there? They said it's been wildly successful.
Especially if you live in an apartment, you don't have room for all those tools.
I mean, that's, that's really all for the, for the library of things. It can be, it can scale to any size. It's really the only limitation for us is physical space to store things, you know, really. And also, you know, quite frankly, to, to build a, build a collection like this and maintain it requires a degree of, of staff time that gets diverted from something else unless you add staff because it's so popular that you can somehow justify the additional, you know, the additional staffing. But it doesn't, you know, it, as much as it seems like it shouldn't have that much time, it does take time to like make sure that things are working, to help people when they can't figure out why the thing, you know, doesn't work, or what am I doing wrong? So it is a level of complication. But yes, it's, it's a brilliant idea. It's the kind of thing that, yeah, with simple, simple tools and things like that, it would be great to be offered a bunch of stuff like that. You know, who, who wants to have like an edger? You know, everybody doesn't need to have an edger.
Right.
You know, those kinds of things. So hopefully we'll begin to build that.
So is roof status part of that?
Well, I thought you would have the roof on your director's report, so.
Oh, sorry.
I would suggest that we, since we're talking about the building and all, let us move to the roof.
Yes.
Proposal.
Physically?
No, it starts.
I've been on that roof and I'm never getting on it.
Wow.
That's a good idea.
That's, I thought I was gonna die.
That wasn't listed in the director's job description.
No, it's, it's, I don't, I don't know if it's in the, the part, it was fine going up, but the part where you have to step off the roof onto the ladder was, was pretty much, I, I was pretty sure that my spank navel was gonna have to come with the, with the fire chart to get me off the roof.
I had shared with you all the draft, draft report that came last Friday and Patrick sent the updated estimate from Gail that describes in somewhat greater detail exactly what they are proposing to do. I was pleased to see that they were going to consult with the library in advance once they figured out where they wanted to do the exploratory work. It's a lot of money.
Yeah, and this comes out of our budget, the town budget. How does this get funded?
So we, there are, I haven't had a chance to actually look at the, to get the, the actual balances, but there is still money remaining from the original construction budget. There are also funds available through, through money that was collected and held in the Hadley Library Fund, which is the capital campaign.
Right.
And other related, you know, symbolic donation based assets that we have that are, you know, able to be used in this way. So there, money is there to do this, it's just another choosing, rotating.
Anything else, Trudy?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I mean, I mean, this is only for the discovery process and does not include money to, does it redesign the roof?
No.
Should it need to be redesigned, which perhaps it's where we're heading.
But I think we have to do, yeah.
Oh, we have to, oh, gosh.
Okay.
We do have to do this.
All right.
I, I'm not to be a negative, but I actually want to know, like, I don't want to know, but I wonder, the stupid question of the day is, why, like, could we just go forward with putting a new design and a new roof? Like, or do we feel like we don't have that answer or we need to explore more? I, I just wonder when we're spending a lot of money to figure out what went wrong, like when does it stop? I, I'm not judging, I'm just asking.
Oh, Lynn, you tell, you go for it.
I think one of the points that John made in his presentation to us was, we don't know what lies beneath the shingles.
That's right, that's right.
And unless and until we know the condition of...
We need to design.
The...
Insulation and...
The insulation as well as the, I lost the word, Jack.
Well, yeah, he had some thermal pictures that showed that maybe the, the depth underneath was partly saturated and then some other places where it was probably dry, but no one knows for sure.
Right, so we don't know the depth of the work. Right, that's my, I'm sorry, I forgot that. I saw that and just like, I, I got lost in the numbers and was like...
It sounds, it sounds like from discussing this with John, and I've had a couple of conversations with him on the phone as well, and it sounds like, and I don't want to, I don't want to misquote him, I don't want to mischaracterize this, but it seems also that they need to do that exploration, not only of the condition, but they also need to confirm that what the Asbotron say was done, has been done, that it corresponds to what is on the, on the schematic, so that they can then make an informed decision about what the corrective action might be. Meaning, when I say corrective, I mean, do you rip the roof off? Do you, apparently it's a possibility to like, with a metal roof, you can go over. So it just sort of depends on whether they need to, you know, how deeply they need to, you know, be remediating something.
Yeah, I have one more thought on this and I know, I, I know they have to put this in, but I was a little upset to see when they said that, you know, it may not look, they're gonna drill or, you know, do their work and they may not be able to put it back in the same shape that it was. And we may see visual places where they, you know, done the work. And I felt, well, why? And that seems very sad.
I think that's, I think it's primarily a caveat.
Yeah.
And it certainly has to do with whether or not we have enough leftover shingles.
Yeah.
But even still, those will not have experienced four or five years' worth of weather.
Totally.
So even if they are the same shingle, the appearance might be somewhat different. I don't think we're talking about, oh, there's going to be this big bump. I think the surface will be smooth, but the shingles may look like they've been replaced because they will have bad...
Yeah. And I'm not sure if this analogy is totally apt, but in some ways consider this a biopsy before larger surgery. And again, we don't know the shape of the patient and we have to figure this out. And hopefully this will go a long way to give us the answer.
Did we decide yet on who, because they're not gonna do the, they need a roofer to come, right? Is that?
That's the extra part.
So we are, okay.
Titan was recommended.
I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's my fault.
There, I think it's, it's an optional service by Titan and the bid is $9,600, if I'm correct.
Oh, sorry, it's at the end.
Yeah.
Okay. I stopped when I saw the, I didn't continue.
Yeah. It's my fault. It's another go.
Yep.
I was pleased, I was afraid that they were going to identify a roofer closer to them rather than one closer to us.
Oh.
And I did go look at the Titan Roofing website and I would say it probably hasn't been updated very recently, but they have clearly worked on a number of Clark Art Institute, Naismith Museum, something over at Williston.
So some large scale projects.
Yeah.
High grade projects, yeah. Good.
I mean, I don't have any aptitude to evaluate, but I am assuming that institutions like that would have a better vetting process than anything I could do.
So one question that I have, and I'm just thinking about this now as we're talking about this, but I'm wondering with something like this where there's an invasive form of work going on with the building, I'm assuming this will require permits? And assuming that there is a permit involved, that means it will be inspected when it's done. So that, that is another level of assurance that the, that the work, you know, that there are going to be eyes on the work, hopefully. I mean, and even if it's not required, we should ask that the inspector be looking at this.
That's an excellent question because sometimes it comes down to, is this complete repair? Is this just a patch job? I mean, what exactly qualifies for necessitating a building?
We'll have to ask, but I would think if you're cutting into the building and then replacing something, I would think that...
Usually it's on the, like, because then all the permitting fees and everything would be in here. I don't see any...
No, I understand for that. I mean, it's worthwhile asking. It doesn't cost anything to ask and better not to get in trouble afterwards.
So one thing I, I will bring up, this is such a wild time of major changes for the town, obviously, but the, you all know that Mike Mason has taken over as the interim town administrator. He asked, yesterday, I believe, yesterday was his first day on the job, and I will tell you that he called us, called me and said, the select board has given me a clear direction, they've said that they want this situation to, to get full attention, they want us to come to a resolution on it. And so, you know, he was calling me on his first day in that capacity to, to kind of get the background. And so we talked for probably 20 minutes about that. He then, in the meantime, has been in touch with town council to sort of revive that conversation, provide the information that has come up between, you know, whatever that was, a year, a year and a half ago, and now, including the Gail report, so that they can be, you know, that they can be giving us some information. One of the things that he, he, one of the bits of feedback that he got from town council was to absolutely make sure that the work that is done is done to, and I'm not sure how you, how you quantify this, but that the, when the work is done and is done up to a standard, that if there, if it did come to a legal, any sort of legal action, that it would not be...
It would not expose us.
De-rail because they did such a crappy job putting it back together that, you know, they were like, well, no, it's, it's all the fault of the, the guy that came after us or something like that. So that came from town council.
And I feel like Gail is reputable, like not worried.
I'm not worried.
You're worried about Titan. Not worried, but...
Well, I guess what I would say is that if anything, in my mind, and maybe, I don't know if this is rational, but I, I feel like this is a good reason for having Gail be the party that is vetting the roofer and therefore they are also responsible for the work of the roofer. And if there's a problem with the roofing, we're able to go to Gail and say, you know, we don't think that this is satisfactory, we're not paying the rest of your fee or until it's resolved, you know what I mean? Have something to build.
Yeah.
Well, and to your original question, on page four of this printout, our fee does not include obtaining permits. So they do put that in here just so we're aware, you know, if you want Gail to sort of be the, the group in charge, maybe that's something to talk to John about.
Yeah, I, I will talk, I will talk to, I will talk to Tom first and just see, explain what we're doing and ask him, you know, what is, what, what would be required, what would be required of the contractor in this situation and see if they can go for it.
So with all this prelude sort of laid out, how can we move it forward?
Both, right.
I have a quick, I, I somehow missed this and I'm wondering if we're talking about somebody who has made a bid to repair the roof or to redo the roof?
No, no, no.
No.
This, after we had the meeting with the select board, I asked Patrick, because there was the consensus among the trustees and then among members of the select board that the exploratory work needed to happen. So I asked Patrick to get in touch with Gail in order to come up... in order to come up with a proposal for us to consider for the exploratory work. And so that's what, yes. That is, because we can't, we can't responsibly take any other steps until we know.
Exactly.
And would it be nice to put it all in a package deal? Maybe, but we don't have that option, I don't think. So this is...
How, how much of the roof has to be replaced and repaired? And how to offset anything that might happen down the road with the existing roof? Are we gonna patch it, or are they gonna redo it? That's, those are questions that are gonna have to be resolved.
I was just gonna make a motion that we, um, use, I guess we don't know how much funds in the library building fund. So I, I wonder if the motion is to say where we're taking the money from?
Possibly.
I would, I would suggest that the motion specify using any remaining building funds first, and supplementing that with other sources.
Yeah, so this, the other source, I, I think the most logical one would be to use the funds that are in the Nugent.
Yes.
Because that, that's out of disposal, how did everyone, we'd have to go through the step intermediate step of getting the funds from the community foundation to the, to the treasurer. So I think we should just get, go with the Nugent funds, which we're supposed to be, you know, we're supposed to be spending.
These are funds to pay for what?
So I'm making that motion.
To pay for, to pay for this exploratory work.
So...
The library is going to pay for this.
We're gonna pay for this.
Yes.
We, we have to take a second, then we can discuss.
Oh, okay. It wasn't about your motion, though, it was about something else. Go ahead. It was about this, but before the motion. All right.
Let's get a clear motion on the floor first.
Yeah. So the motion is to, um, it's twenty-seven thousand six hundred dollars, is the total I see. First...
No.
I mean, that's what I...
Twenty-seven thousand six hundred.
Yeah, that's what we're in the...
What do you say?
Twenty-seven six, that includes the Titan, the optional...
You have twenty-nine five.
Are you looking at the final one that was sent around?
I thought I was looking at the final one.
I thought I was looking at the final two.
The one that I had, twenty-nine, twenty-nine five.
Is it the sixth?
Yeah. No, I missed the next one.
September ninth.
I wondered, yesterday? Okay.
Okay.
That was the one that was a draft?
Yeah, yeah, I know, it says draft, yeah. What's the final total now?
Twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Do you wanna continue with your motion?
Um, motion is to take twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars first out of construction funds, followed by Nugent funds, to pay for Gale and the roofing subcontractor to continue the exploratory work on the roof.
Second. I'll second it. Okay. Further discussion.
No, no, that doesn't pertain to the motion per se, but it's about this, it is about what we're gonna get out of this. And I was wondering, Patrick, did, is there some reason that they, for all of this, you know, exploratory work which we need to do, they can't also come up with a recommendation? I mean, is there, it's, it, to me logically, it seems that, that, that this might include the exploratory work, should include a recommendation, you know, once they finish the exploratory work, that should be, I don't know, I just feel like for that kind of money, it should be part of the package, but, um...
Well, recommendation for what? A recommendation that says, this is, this is what you need to do next?
Right.
In terms of, as a result of what they find?
Right. Well, but that could just be, you need to, we need to take out all the insulation, we need to redo the deck. No, I'm thinking about something more to do with...
We're not there yet. We keep, we're not there in terms of, because if you can use what's there, our options are the surfaces that can be applied to an unventilated roof deck, which are slate, metal, the rubber, the...
Polymers, yes.
Polymer shingles, or the membrane.
Yeah.
If we were to do something with asphalt shingles, then we need the ventilated roof deck.
I understood that from last time.
And that's...
Yeah. Um, okay, but then it's still, at some point, even if we know that what the options are, somebody, we would probably want some kind of advice as well from a professional about which would be the most likely or...
Well, that would, that would come at, okay, this is the information we have.
We would pay them again to give us that kind of advice.
Someone to do the design work, as well as the installation.
Help us select an option is basically what my next thought was. I know we're not there, we don't know where we're gonna be, but at some point, we're gonna get all this information, and we're gonna have to pay somebody else to give us advice about what our options are.
I think they're, I think they're gonna be forthcoming, and I think they've already sort of been giving us that kind of unofficial, this could happen, or that could happen. But when it comes to an actual, I mean, it's gonna come down to quotes, quote-stone copy. You know, you're going to have to...
But you have to know which way you're going before you get a quote.
Absolutely.
Well, but, but you can ask a contractor, give us a price for these two options, and then make a decision. So I don't, I mean, Gale isn't going to do the pricing and design work without another bite at the apple.
Right.
But we know that going into it. This is, this is just, we have to get, yes.
Has the company who originally built this roof totally off the hook? Are they, have they been contacted? Have they been involved? Or is there any guarantee of their work? This is unusual, that a roof should fail this quickly, and we've seen there was a, a design issue that should have been taken care of. Are they totally off the hook?
I think that's really something for town council to, you know, we're not, we're not really in a position to extract anything from anyone. That's, that's a question for the, for town, for the town administration, select board, and town council to, to consult their, you know, lawyers.
Ask them to explore that question?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, they're looking, they're looking, they're...
Yes. That is part of the conversation that Patrick had with the interim town administrator today, or yesterday.
So there's a motion out there.
Yes.
And it's been...
Further discussion.
Yeah.
In that case, all in favor of the motion to accept Gale's proposal with the funding sources mentioned? Are you gonna stay? Okay.
And just for the sake of history, um, say a little bit more about the Nugent funding?
That was that Kate Nugent left, um, fifty thousand dollars, although it grew greatly over time, for, specifically for the building of the library. So that's why we used that fund first, 'cause that's what it was left.
I'm sorry, what was, I was distracted.
Just asking what the Nugent fund was, I just...
Well, the, the Nugent, it's, this room is named after, sure, after Kate Nugent, and it was based on a, on a gift that came to, actually came before the library was under construction, but the money was waiting for a purpose, and it was decided, and, you know, we discussed this with, um, with Beth Brown, Kate's sister, and got the okay to use this for the new building, and we said yes, and so we made the room. But the money, you know, in, just in the paying of those, the money is still there in one of the pots.
Kate originally left us the money hoping we would get the church. So there were long talks, many, like, to really go back. We were looking at the church, and that's when Kate kind of started to put us in her well, when she thought there was a chance we might have the church next door to the library, and the idea was we were going to originally annex the church to the library.
Oh, interesting.
The church, but the diocese wouldn't sell us the church.
The old St. John's church.
Correct. They, they would only sell it to us with certain provisions of use.
Is that the one, the vodka guy?
Yes, it might be one of them. I'm sorry, I tried not to say anything.
I wonder what the timeline on this would be?
Uh, I believe it says in here, three, does it say three to four weeks?
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so is the expectation that, or the hope that we are at the next select board meeting kind of giving an update? And if so, I think it would be good, I would make the request that we post from now on every time we go to a select board meeting, just to be safe. In case we ever have to take a vote, or they ask us anything, it doesn't hurt. Um, but if we're on their agenda, it, it kind of helps to post.
Perfectly reasonable. There was a quorum of us the last time, but...
Yeah, but it just, like, in case there ever is, it's just a safe strategy.
Sorry, I don't know what that means.
So if we were at a select board meeting, and say you all had decided to come, and we wanted to debate or have a vote with the select board present, and we didn't post the meeting as, you know, us having a quorum, we couldn't take a vote on anything. So it just opens us, it, it's like one of those things that you just do, and then it doesn't hurt us if we're not there, it just helps us if we, if we need to have it.
With open meeting laws, there are some functions around deliberation and other things, and it is very much a forward-looking move.
Sounds good.
So would you clarify for me what this means? I'm not sure what, posting or not, we, we post our meetings, we have to do that.
Yeah, you post the meeting, you post it as a...
That's done anyway.
No, but if we're at the select board meeting and there's a quorum of us, say we all go to the select board meeting, and we're representing the library, and we have, we, we decide to talk or debate or do anything with the select board, they would want, we would have to post as a library group also having a meeting with the select board that night. It's open meeting law?
We would not be able to take any...
Yeah, well, anytime we meet...
As a committee?
Yes, we always post it.
We have to post it.
But they, select board meets on a different day and a different time, and if we were there as a select board group...
As guests, as guests.
We were, yes, that's, that's all. Yep. No, if I know we are going to be on their agenda, I will be sure to do that.
And let us know if you hear...
Oh, absolutely.
Of course.
No, 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 I think I am pretty good about...
You are.
Keeping you guys, I'm not trying to hoard this for myself, believe me. No, thank you.
We're happy to come help support, yeah.
Thank you. I think we have already covered strategic planning. Was there anything else with regard to L E D or, oh, I know what we didn't do. We didn't do the, um...
The goals.
Library doors.
Liberal goals.
Yeah.
Sorry. Things about in and out of order.
Have your convenience before we forget.
Only need one, that's right. Did that? Okay. Um, Patrick, do you wanna talk about your approach in putting the goals together this way briefly?
Yeah, so, um, I mean, I think we, I think we kind of went over this a little bit at the last meeting, but basically, my approach to it was to sort of take the, the number of kind of individual things that, to me, were more like items on a to-do list rather than large goals, and to sort of take all of those things, take the things that I have to remind as my own internal to-do list, put them together, sort of them into what I felt were comfortable categories. Because I think, you know, in terms of creating goals, if, with any given item on that to-do list, it sort of begs the question, why are you doing it? What's the point of this? This is just like, you know, something to do, go to the store. Why are you going to the store? Because to maintain health and nutrition and a larger goal. So that's what I tried to do with, with, with a lot of these items, to then be able to make a statement about why we were, you know, why I was doing these things. And I, I think they make sense, they make sense to me, I think they make, I think they are also sort of compatible with some of the information that we... I think this was also in my mind as we were thinking about how to collect the information for the long-range plan, um, because I think these things are all sort of linked together. It would have been great to have the long-range plan in place before creating such a document, but, you know, the fact that I'm doing all this, thinking about these two things, which are, one is my own personal professional goals, one is institutional organizational goals, those things should be relatively, you know, running in parallel.
So the only thing I would say, and, and maybe I've just spent too many years back in education, is that, um, I love them. I, I wanna start by saying that, that I, I was, I, I really like them, I like them as goals. To me, they remind me a lot of, like, what we do in education, which is goals and then objectives, which are the action items under the goals, which is, which is kind of what you did. Um, the only kind of sticking point I have is like, I'm still, I, I wonder if there should be, the objective should be more like action items, like grant opportunities? Is that meaning you're going to seek grant opportunities? Do, do you see my questions?
No.
Under goal, building towards strength through financial components. So it says fundraising subcommittee. Does that mean we're gonna organize one, like, you're gonna organize one? Like...
Yeah.
They're not actionable objectives, it's like my...
They're, they're not, I mean...
Well, the way they're worded, it's not, like, capital planning. So like, what, what does that mean?
So capital planning in terms, and, and a current example of that is that we're approaching the town for a downtown meeting to purchase ten thousand dollars worth of computers for public use. So we're using, you know, we're using assets that are available to us to... I mean, it's something that you either do it or you don't do it. We could just say, well, we're not, we're not doing it, it would be less work not to do it, but, I mean, I don't, I'm not really sure.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm phrasing my question correctly, maybe...
So you want more verbs that describe the action that will be taken on an item?
Really, like, I know what capital planning is, it's not that I don't know what it is, but I'm saying, if you're measuring someone on a goal...
On having achieved it. How do you, how do I know that it has been?
Without actionable objectives, that's, right, yeah. I like all the things on there, I'm totally in favor of them, I just think it's a wording issue.
So working off of what you're saying, Joanne, so under communication goal, improve quality and effectiveness of communication and planning, you know, our goals are considered SMART goals, and they am, and that SMART acronym is measurable. Well, improved quality, how much? You know, I'm just wondering about those measurements of these goals.
Well, that, so actually, that, that's, this one actually came directly out of, I think, your, your feedback when, when we were starting this and was getting, you know, suggestions from individual trustees, and you had kind of given a sort of, I don't know if it was anecdotal, but kind of like, that idea of like, I've been around town, I've talked to a lot of people about the library, and, you know, I think your suggestion was, how do we, how do we create the, how do we create, create the outreach? You know, how do we get people that haven't been to the library to know about the library?
More access, more attractive, more available to all citizens in our community.
But the, but the question, the question for me is, how do you measure that? As far as I'm concerned, that is already happening, because the numbers year over year are going up. are going up. So, I mean, it, it's hard to, I mean, so I guess what I would say is, having put this together, I think now it's up to, to, to you folks to, if you like what's in the stew pot here, now put it into the form, serve it up in the form that you want so that you can put the metrics to it if you need metrics. I personally am more-
And it, it could be that it's a checklist and like we go back and review it and give a number based on the checklist. Patrick, I'm just trying to remove a lot of subjectivity and, you know, and, and kind of guidance for people to say, okay, this is a clear four because he met three out of four of these. Or this is, I'm, I'm just trying to help it be concrete. It's, I like it a lot. I like that. Those goals gathered together with objectives and I like them. I think they match what we do.
So, Joanne, for instance, on, on capital planning, you would say, present to town meeting a proposal for $10,000 worth of new computers. Is that what you're thinking about? I mean, that's a very concrete goal.
Or it could be like, you know-
Oh, I'm just using that as an example. I mean, it could be other things.
I guess, I guess from my point of view, the thing about this is it's kind of like, it's a little bit complicated is that if you, if you completely, like, I wouldn't have been able to tell you that six months ago. You know, some of this is, is more like, did you, did you utilize the town meeting, or not the town meeting, but did you utilize the capital planning process to further, you know, the, whatever the, the goal of the library was in terms of physical improvements and, and maintenance? And some years that, all that entails is providing an update to the capital planning committee. No, we're not asking for any money this year, but next year we might. And we might not know that we're doing that. It's all a matter of timing and we might not know that until a month before the paperwork is due, that, yeah, we, we ought to fix the carpet that's worn or, you know what I mean? It's hard to really know that in year to year advance. So you have to be careful how it's working.
Well, one idea might be, I'm just trying to be creative and throw out ideas, is it could be in our measurement tool rather than in his goal to where it may be like, how about goal, building towards strength through financial independence? So then on our measurement tool, it says, you know, I'm making this up, five, Patrick completed all of, you know, all of the listed objectives. Four, Patrick completed 90% of his list. Like, we, we could turn it in that way, right? Like, so that it gives you some flexibility and it helps us decide which, what he's accomplished.
But then we run into this whole issue, which we've already discussed about things, parts of it being out of his control. So you can't penalize someone for something that they couldn't control to begin with, which is where a director's position is not the same as an educator's position. And so I don't think you can-
But I, I don't think it does. Because if, say, say, let's, let's look at the fundraising subcommittee. Say he tries to organize it and it doesn't, didn't work out, but he tried to organize it. And then you're measuring at the end of the year and you're like, oh, he said he was going to try to do this. He did try to do it. It didn't work out, but he tried to do it. Like, it's not like he just forgot that objective altogether. It just, for whatever reason, there wasn't anyone interested or whatever the reason is, it didn't work out. You might still give him the full credit for that because he did what he said he was going to do, which is, do you see what I'm saying? Like, even with teacher goals, often you don't, you can't fulfill the, the goal, but they want to know that you, like, if you said you were going to do this, did you try to do it, right? Like-
That's already built into this document. I don't think we need to make this any more complicated than-
It's built into what document?
Into his, his, uh, his document that he's given, his goals.
I'm talking about when we measure him at the end of, so what-
When we do the annual review.
Isn't that a separate thing from what we're talking about now?
But it's based on the goals. So I'm just saying that another way to leave it the way it is and, and say, okay, this, this methodology could work, is by thinking about the end game.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Can you rewind and go back in history? Why is the process of creating the goals, why is it changing in September 2024 compared to 2023, 2022? What was the flaw with the old method of doing this? Or did you not have goals? Or what was the, why are you rethinking this now?
Because I think this is really only, the second or third year, we have had specific goals as opposed to just conducting the review against the job description.
To go back to the beginning, there was a more formal set of goals when I first took the job. There was, there was a set of goals that I, you know, as far as the document, I had to go dig it out and see what form it, it was in. But as the real-world process of building the library came along, I, I, that, those, those, that measurement of those goals, we were constantly, I, I don't know why the trustees decided to sort of like let that go by the wayside, probably because some things had to be left by the wayside when so much was going on and there's so few people who'd do it. But it essentially just sort of became more of a, you know, we're, we're getting on with this other thing which is more important. I, I really can't speak to it. But it, it kind of fell by the wayside and it's being picked back up in all these couple of years to have more of like a coherent framework, particularly where in the, in the sort of renegotiation of my contract in the last year, there was, it was kind of a protracted affair. So how do we, how do we have this so that it's a more streamlined process?
And I think you're seeing my reaction because I came on board during the protracted-
Negotiations.
Negotiation. And I just really, I really want to make sure that we wind up with, you know, something that-
That's coherent and cohesive.
Yeah. Yeah.
It had been the case that any changes in Patrick's salary beyond the town COLA were based on the results of his review. And so there was a very different dynamic. And that was also done without specific goals, which made it more challenging for everybody. The contract now specifies what his salary will be over the course of the five years covered. Three years covered.
Three.
Sorry. And so that sort of left us, gave us the freedom to design a more useful and more specific to conduct a, a review differently based on somewhat different criteria in addition to what is in the job description. So that's-
That's helpful to hear-
Yeah.
The history behind it.
Sure.
And isn't there an aspect of it also that now, there's a piece of it that's required by the Mass Library Association, that the director has to have goals now?
I don't remember that.
I don't know that that's required. I don't know that that's required, though. Because I can guarantee you, there are many directors that don't have them.
That don't.
So, yeah. But I, I do, you know, again, just to kind of step back, I, I, as far as the process goes here, I think we're all a little bit sort of finding our way in this. Because I think when we started out with this, we, we had, you know, a handful of things that, again, as I said, were, were fairly concrete things that were much more like, put a check next to it. I did my whole, and I, what I'm really trying to do here is give more, create a higher expectation for the work that I do and, and to make sure that the work that I'm doing stands next to what I think are the organizational goals of the library so that it's sort of like, they're more or less one and the same. And so that's why I've kind of done it in this way, because I think this more or less covers the waterfront in a way that other lists have not done necessarily to date. And if there's something here that isn't here, then, you know, it should be, we should talk about it. But I think from my point of view, this is pretty much, that covers like what I do when I come to work.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
So what should we do to move this forward?
Well, we can either adopt it by consensus or if someone feels strongly, we can make a motion to accept the proposed director goals.
I assume.
Second? Is there any?
I have a question. So will the committee that is in charge of Patrick's review then take these goals now and kind of think about how we will measure them when it's time, you know, measure his success when we get closer to evaluation time?
Can I just ask the question, doesn't, doesn't your, doesn't your evaluation form essentially already provide those, those metrics through a set of categories such as financial or, you know, what, I can't remember what the categories are, but they may not completely line up here.
So we have to, we would-
No, we're good in review.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I mean, it'd be silly to use a tool that's-
Yes.
Not-
Yes.
Relevant anymore. But, no, I don't think that's a problem.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Um, the one last thing. I was wondering if we could find a volunteer to be the board liaison to the Friends. Patrick always attends the meetings unless he's out of the state or otherwise away. And it has been useful as well as a sort of lines of communication, but also sort of building a relationship. Or if, they think they meet monthly and not in the summer? Or every other month?
They don't, they don't meet in July and August.
Right.
I can't remember if they meet, they may not meet in December as well. I'm not sure. I can't remember about December.
But it's not every month through the year?
Yeah, it's every month except for, you know, those two months in the summer. They, I mean, they do meet every month, otherwise it's monthly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if somebody will, they usually meet on a different Tuesday?
Their, or the second, their, their third Tuesday.
The third Tuesday?
Yeah.
At the library?
Right here in this room.
There you go. Or if we made a sign-up sheet and people rotated in and out, that would be fine. I'm certainly willing to consider options, but given, I think it is helpful for them to see us and it is helpful for us to see them and what they are doing. And-
Did you just say that does it make sense to just go month, month by month? Because it's usually the week after this, so people generally know their schedules so someone could just volunteer and say, yeah, I'll go, I'll go this.
Well, I mean, that's an option. I mean, if there were someone who would be willing to do it every month, that would be fine. If no one wants to make that kind of commitment, is there anyone who wants to alternate?
I would love to. I just am a, the newbie and I, I have a lot to learn. I'm going to go to those meetings, I think. I'm going to take advantage of as much as I can, but I think it would be better for someone a little more seasoning to do this than me.
It's not really, just to, to put your mind at ease, though, it's really not a heavy lift. I think it's really, it's a very conversational group. They don't have necessarily a, a dog in the fight with any of the decisions that are made by the trustees. Generally, it's more just curiosity about what goes on and what's the, I heard this and I read this in the newspaper, what's, what's going on.
Newspaper.
But I, as, as Lynn is saying, I think it's really more a matter of just the goodwill of, of taking an interest and, and, you know, and interfacing with that group because they do support financially quite a lot of our operation, you know? A lot of our programming is now, it always has been, but in, in a more formal way, since Joanne was on as president, we have a very, you know, now a very robust and formal relationship with the Friends as far as going to them on a yearly basis and saying, these are the things we would like the Friends to support. And, you know, and then taking that to implement, you know, the, the summer reading programs or the subscriptions to the New York Times. So it's really just, you know, about kind of like maintaining that goodwill and, and relationship to, to that group. It's their very dedicated volunteer group.
And occasionally reporting, you know, just mentioning what their conversation was or if they are planning anything.
You might find yourself roped in to make big, big deals.
Such a brownie-making skill.
I only have to do that once before they leave me of that duty. There's another Tuesday group that I'm supposed to be meeting with. I'll make sure that they're not on the third month, third Wednesday, Tuesday.
Well-
But I'll have to check.
Check and either let Patrick know or let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's also generally a short, pretty, fairly short meeting. It's not, you know, it rarely ever goes over an hour, I think. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct, yes.
So we use the line.
Unless we had anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So you have time to get home and make popcorn or pour a glass of wine. Or both.
Something a little stiffer.
Whatever.
I was taking notes for my students.
Do we need to vote on adjourning or just-
Yes. Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor. Thank you.